I'll call this meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees to order. It is 6:00. We have a quorum present. We are going to go into closed session at this time pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, to discuss real property. We will be back and resume our meeting at 7:00 p.m. No action will be taken in closed session, and when we return at 7:00, we will begin with the agenda as posted. Thank you. This meeting is resuming. The board has been in closed session. No action was taken. Before we went into closed session, I failed to go through the new, or not the new anymore, but the open meeting requirements and the guidance that we've been provided by the governor. So I'll do that at this time. This meeting is available as a video and audio conference in accordance with the governor's suspension of certain open meeting requirements to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify, one, members of the public may attend this meeting in person or watch it live on WISD-TV, which is Channel 17 on Grande Communications and Spectrum, and online at wacoisd.org/live. Members of the public attending in person may sign up to offer public comments on an agenda item, as is our normal practice. Members of the public who are not attending in person were given instructions to submit comments by 10:00 last night to Mr. Wueter. Members of the board who are not physically present tonight in the boardroom are participating via video conferencing application, which allows for two-way communication between those in person and those participating remotely. All items to be discussed or voted upon have been posted in accordance with state law. And if you have any questions about the suspended open meeting requirements, please contact the Office of the Attorney General by calling 888-672-6787, or by emailing toma@oag.texas.gov. Okay. Oh, okay. So I'm going to pause just for a minute. Trustee Manning is appearing remotely tonight, and there he is. Mr. Manning, can you hear me? Mr. Manning, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay. Well, you missed all of the open meetings rules that I read every meeting. Would you like them to, me to read them for you?
Yes, syllable by syllable, please. I think after 11 years on the school board, I think I know what they are.
I think so. Can somebody fix his sound, because I can't hear him very well?
He's got to turn it off himself.
I'm not sure if it's, if it's.
Okay. Are you going to turn up your sound? You need to turn up your sound, because I can't hear you very well.
Well, it's all the way up.
It's all the way up?
Yes. I've been, I've been having this problem with every.
Hey, now we can hear you.
We got it.
We got it. Thank you. Okay. So it's my understanding that we have not received any public comments. Is that right? And no one has signed up to speak to the board tonight, etc. Okay. Next on our agenda is recognition of outstanding community partners, Family of Faith Worship Center. Mr. Wueter.
Madam President, Waco ISD's theme for the 2020-21 school year is "Empower All, Value All." The theme reflects the district's mission to provide an educational foundation that empowers and values all. It celebrates learning and growing as students, professionals, and individuals. Waco ISD recognizes that when individuals feel empowered and valued, their ability to overcome challenges, grow, and succeed is strengthened. Waco ISD is blessed to have scores of community partners who are deeply invested in the district's students, staff, and their success. Each month, the district is recognizing community partner making a difference with the Waco ISD Award for Outstanding Community Partners. In September, the district is recognizing Family of Faith Worship Center. Family of Faith Worship Center serves as an adopt-a-school partner with Kendrick Elementary. They also regularly support University High. They partner with the campuses in various ways, including participating in campus and family events, providing food and meals for the students and staff, as well as teacher appreciation gifts. The staff and congregation of Family of Faith also organize school supply drives and host a regular food pantry supporting area families, specifically the South Waco community. Even throughout the COVID pandemic, the church also recognizes our graduates, staff, and students through various special services during the year. Additionally, Family of Faith Worship Center was recognized for their outstanding support of Kendrick Elementary School through the Waco ISD Adopt-A-School program, with the Rookie of the Year Award for the 2018-2019 school year. If we can scroll to the next image, please, you'll see Reverend Ruben Andrade Jr., who is accepting the award virtually. So we congratulate the Family of Faith Worship Center for this month's outstanding community partners. Yes, that's Tony Garcia and Reverend Ruben Andrade Jr. We thank them very much for their support of Kendrick Elementary, as well as our entire district, especially in the last few months leading up to back-to-school.
All right. Welcome to all of you, and I want to just give a brief update this evening on, with our back-to-school information. We're off to a great start after being closed for six months. I'm really proud of the staff and all the work that was done to prepare for the school year. There was a good number of hours that went into getting to this point, and things ran pretty smoothly, all things considered. We expected to have some technology bumps, and we did. We had, we worked to get students online as quickly as possible. Jerry and his team have done a fantastic job of managing that with help desk tickets and staff, and that has gone smoothly, and we're seeing the number of requests for help going down. So all in all, a pretty smooth start, all things considered, with COVID and our situation that we're in. I had the opportunity to assist at Mountain View this week, which has been quite a pleasure for me. I got to see how things worked firsthand with the students and the staff, observed procedures, participated in screening students as they were getting out of their cars, and really enjoyed visiting with students and their families. And I heard from principals yesterday, and I experienced it as well, that, that the parents have just been really fantastic. And that was my experience, and I loved getting to see them and meet them. I wanted to share some enrollment data with you this evening, and so let me see if I can hold this down and look at this at the same time. We currently have 14,244 students who are enrolled, and that's down by about 322 students over last year's third day of school, and about 654 down from our snapshot date. So typically, in schools, you will grow, continue to add students until the end of October, when the state takes the official count. So I expect us to continue to grow over the next several weeks, as we always do, but we are, we are down a bit over last year's third day. So if you're, if I'm looking at specific grade levels, I would be most concerned about pre-K, which is down by about 287 students over last year, and I think that's a little bit understandable with, given the age of the students and, and the pandemic. So we have lost some pre-K students. And then we, I think another area for us is high school. High school students are down. I think students will log on and get in the system, but they're, they're a little bit slow in doing that. At this time, we are about 51.3% in-person and 48.67% remote. So a little lower on remote than we anticipated. Based on our survey data, we were anticipating about 56, 57% remote, and that has not worked out to that percentage, so a little bit more heavier on the in-person at this point. Our transportation numbers are down on bus ridership. We're about a third of what we normally see on our buses, and so that has allowed for social distancing to work well on those school buses, and so no issues there. And we're about 26% of our normal ridership for special education students. Athletic practices and events have begun, started this week, and we're following all of the guidance from the UIL, which includes screening, sanitizing, masks and face coverings, and about 50%, or 50% of our normal capacity for spectators and fans. And so Coach Love has been working with his team for all of those kinds of events, and we'll be following those guidelines, which are very strict by the UIL. Our band will not be traveling to out-of-town games this year, but they will perform at home football games, and we are planning for a marching show in early December, but we won't have our typical marching program for the year. And then finally, as you're aware, we learned late yesterday that someone at one of our campuses tested positive for COVID-19, and so I'm going to ask Kyle to come up this evening and give you an overview of our procedures for handling a positive case, including our notification to parents. So Kyle, thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Kinkanen, board members. When someone reports that they have tested positive for COVID-19 and they've been on our campuses, the process begins with our Health Services Department interviewing the person who tested positive. And the first thing they're looking to establish is the period in which the person would have been infectious. And so that's looking at, in the case of someone who is symptomatic, the two days leading up to the onset of their symptoms, and any time after that. For someone who is asymptomatic, it's looking at the two days leading up to when they took the test that was positive. Once the Health Services Department determines that time period in which they were potentially symptomatic, they work through in detail each of those days with the person, whether or not they were on campus or in another district facility, if they were, what they did throughout the day, in each place that they were around other people, whether they're staff members, students, teaching interns from one of our professional development school partnerships, who they were around, how long they were around them for, what the physical setup of that room was like, to get a sense of social distancing, whether or not people were wearing masks. And they use that information, supplementing at times where they may need to with information from campus leadership about who was where and what activities were happening, to build a list of close contacts. So then the second step in the process is that our Health Services Department, in some cases, our campus principals, go through and have personal conversations with each person who is identified as having been in close contact with the person who tested positive. The CDC defines close contact as being within six feet of that person for 15 minutes or more cumulatively, and it actually doesn't necessarily make a difference. While it makes a difference to the risk to the people in the room, whether you're wearing masks, for our purposes in determining whether or not someone was in close contact, we don't discount someone as a close contact if they were wearing masks or change the criteria we're looking at. We're just looking at being together within six feet for about, for 15 minutes or more. Each of the close contacts, then, is contacted, talked through, that they need to stay home for 14 days from whenever the last time was that they were in contact with that person. That time period comes from the period over which most people will develop an infection if they're exposed to COVID-19, and they're going to get the virus. That's anywhere from two to 14 days when symptoms and an infection starts to develop for about 95% of people who are exposed to the virus and later test positive. Once we've had an opportunity to work through the close contacts, make sure that they know that they need to stay home and not report to work if they're an employee, not come to school if they're a student, for 14 days from their last contact with the person who tested positive, then we have a general notification process where we let everyone know in any campus or facility where the person who tested positive has been, that there was someone in that facility on that campus who tested positive. And what that looks like is first, an email to both families and employees with that information. It also includes some general information about the disease itself and how folks can identify if they have symptoms. We then send a hard copy of that message home at the end of the day with any students who are learning in person, and we share that message in both English and Spanish. Throughout the process, we're working very closely with the Health District in sharing information back and forth and identifying whether, you know, if there are any questions about whether or not someone qualifies as a close contact, that's an issue that we work through with the Health District. If there are any special circumstances, that's something that we work through with the Health District. After we've had that general notification to folks who are on, to families and employees who are on campuses, we have a dashboard that we update that you can find online at wacoisd.org/dashboard. It shows the number of cases at each campus and in other district facilities and district-wide for the current week-to-date, and cumulatively since the start of the school year. At this point in time, we don't differentiate, because we only have one case that's in that whole system, between whether the cases are employees or students or other people who are on campus. When the number of cases in any given location exceeds five cumulatively, then we'll start to break those out. But the reason we don't differentiate at this point is because we don't want to inadvertently reveal the identity of someone who tested positive. First and foremost, we have a legal responsibility under both state and federal laws to protect the private health information of our employees and our students. But beyond that, one of the most effective tools that we have for controlling the spread on our, of the virus on our campuses is to very quickly identify anyone who may have been exposed to someone who has since tested positive. And to do that, we really need people to self-report as soon as they learn that they've tested positive. So we want them to feel comfortable coming to us, sharing that information, knowing that their personal identity won't be revealed, but that we'll use the information that they share to make sure that the virus doesn't spread on our campuses. We then follow up each week with reports to the state of any positive test results that are reported to us, and regularly with additional reports and additional information of any positive test results and information about any close contacts to the Waco McLennan County Public Health District. So throughout this process, it's very close communication with the Health District, it's very close communication with the campus, and working as quickly as possible to identify anyone that might be exposed, and make sure that for that period where they're likely to decide, determine whether or not they're going to get the virus, that they're away from the campus, that they're away from other district facilities, and at home, where if they do develop the virus, they aren't going to expose others to it. That's a very top-level overview of a process that, for as much as we covered, happened surprisingly quickly and is handled very effectively by our Health Services Department, and in particular, our Health Services Director. Are there any questions about that process or the notifications that happen?
I have a question, Mr. Devere. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. My question is, are we informing staff and parents about some of the free testing that has been done in McLennan County and Waco? Do, are we giving people that information so they can get tested?
We are, as the Health District and the Emergency Operations Center works with the state to set up free testing sites. We've been sharing that information. I think it was either the workshop or the regular meeting in August where that was one of the announcements that we made. We typically retweet either from the Health District or from the city when they share information about those testing sites as well.
Are we putting that on our website?
We can certainly add it there. I think in general, we've shared it in board meetings, we've shared it on social media. I don't know that we've included it on the calendar.
I believe, I believe that sharing it in these meetings is not sufficient. We need to put that information on the website and let our parents and students and the community real, make themselves aware of these free testing sites, so that, that may, that may help us. So I'm suggesting that we store, put that information on the WISD website.
Absolutely.
The state requirements for reporting.
Very briefly, but so any time that we learn of a case, we're reporting it to both the local public health district and to the state. That's really a two-way conversation with the public health district. When they learn of a case in their contact tracing, they're relaying that back to us as well. But generally, we learn of it before we're contacted by the public health district or they're able to work through their contact tracing, because in most cases, and what we want to have happen, is when a family learns that their student has tested positive or an employee learns that they've tested positive, to let us know immediately so that we can begin that process. And then weekly, we're reporting the number of cases by campus to the state as well. We know that the state plans to do some reporting statewide about the numbers that they're seeing from school districts. We don't know exactly. We know what the format of what we're reporting to them looks like. We don't know what, how they're going to report that back out to the public yet.
Okay. I missed something you said earlier, Mr. Devere. If, if one of our staff or students go get tested and they test positive, who's responsible for letting us know? The Health Department? That's what I heard you say?
We would ask that the employee or the family of the student let us know, and in, I would say, every case that I'm aware of, since we started bringing staff back to our facilities in June, that's how we've learned about the case first. Typically, that happens faster than the public health district is able to conduct their contact tracing. So when someone tests positive, they learn the day that the test results are available. In many cases, it's at the end of that day that it's reported to the health district, and they need to go through a contact tracing process to determine who might be a student or where there might be exposure. So that's why we ask for that information to be shared with us, from the person or the family as soon as possible, the employer or the family.
And so the dashboard information, as I looked at it earlier today, is only based on schools starting Tuesday. There's no, no information based previously. Am I correct?
Correct. That aligns with the state's reporting requirements, and we've talked about those cases that we've seen over the summer previously, but we've seen, I don't remember the exact number, but I think about 35 to 40 cases spread out from June through prior to the start of school among employees. And some of those cases included people who were off-contract, and so that included some employees who notified us that they had tested positive, even though they weren't seeking leave or even though they weren't on campus prior to testing positive. I also suspect that there were some employees who may have tested positive over the summer who weren't on contract, didn't need to seek leave, and so didn't necessarily notify us because there wasn't a connection with the district. So I don't know that that number is all-inclusive of anyone who has a relationship with Waco ISD who tested positive between June and September eighth, but it definitely includes all the employees who notified us who, because they needed to seek leave while they were out waiting to recover.
That's fine. But like I say, my, my issue is we need to strongly suggest that we get as many tests as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question from Mr. Devere? Okay. Thank you. I want to say that I took a look at the COVID-19 dashboard today, or the link, and it's excellent. And I understand Laura Robertson had a big hand in that, and I want to give a shout-out to her. It's really well-done. There's a lot of good information on it. There's a lot of resources, links there to information that parents can go to, and if we're able to get links to free testing sites, that's a great place for it to be. It's a really user-friendly page and about the best I've seen anywhere. So kudos to Laura and the Communications Department. Mr. Wueter, thank you. Good job.
I have one more on my list.
Yes, you do.
Do I need to repeat all that, Mr. Manning? Did you hear any of that?
No, ma'am. I certainly didn't.
Okay. I apologize. I didn't push the button, and I'll try to do that. Our local chapter of the National Sorority of Phi Delta Kappa Incorporated and the Professional Male Mentor Association are having a tree dedication and scholarship presentation in memory of Mr. Philip Perry, and that will be next Friday, September 18th, at 5:00 p.m. at Carver Middle School. And those two groups, we're planning to do something special, and I want to thank Coach Love for bringing those two groups together to have one really nice event, and we're excited about that. So you are all welcome to join us at Carver at 5:00 p.m. on September 18th. Thank you. And, and let me also just say thank you to Kyle Devere. Mr. Devere has worked closely with our head nurse and with our Communications Department all throughout the summer, and, and already this week, continuing to provide updated information and just guiding the work, the extra work that's being done as a result of this pandemic, and I just want to say thank you publicly for that. You've done a fine job. Thank you.
Item seven is our consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent that a member of the board would like pulled for further Okay. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Cornbloom, you're up. Review and discuss curriculum and instruction update.
Good evening. We are going to go through the work that was done over the summer and kind of where we are right now on some of the things that we've discussed previously. Okay. Taking us back to the last time I presented, we had, I shared with you five focuses that we had, or we have. One was to look at our curriculum and make updates and changes to some of our curriculum documents. Our second priority was tier-one instruction, and really looking at, working with our teachers on improving our, our tier-one instruction, looking at really tight planning. And we have our literacy initiative, which right now is focused at our elementary level, but is a three-year plan. And then we began with our administrators, working on action coaching, which is actually going in and working with our teachers and providing them feedback on their instruction, and then data-driven instruction. So all of those put together are the things that we're really implementing this year to help us meet our targets by the end of the year. So one of the things that we really talked about as we were beginning our curriculum writing this summer was related to the. writing this summer was related to this quote. So it says, "Research shows that most school variables considered separately have at most small effects on learning. The real payoff comes when individual variables combine to reach a critical mass." And that's really what we're working toward, to try to create a common language across WISD around instruction so that whether I'm teaching CTE or English I or elementary, that when we talk about instruction and student learning, that we're defining that in the same way. So this slide just represents kind of the work, that it does not matter if we, you know, say hello in one language or another together, all of those things are producing that common language across our district. And I do think that we've made a big stride toward that. And so I'm proud of the work our teachers did this summer in working toward this. So this slide was actually included in the training that the teachers had this summer because this is actually I-35 near us, and so it's a mess, right? And I know that we all feel that way quite often, like how on earth do we, you know, get to point A to point B sometimes with all of the different closures that we have? And I feel it every day when I leave downtown, another road is closed. But we know that it's working toward improvement, and that's going to be great in the long run. But if we think about this in connection with our teachers, they open up their standards when we receive those from the state, their Texas essential knowledge and skills. And it really is kind of like this. It's just a big ball of standards that really aren't defined in terms of priority. And if really teachers focused on every single standard and gave every standard the same amount of time, they wouldn't get through all of the standards. And so we really needed to provide a document to help them get from point A to point B more clearly and more directly, focusing on the things that are most important to our So as we began curriculum writing this summer, we had kind of a professional development with our curriculum staff to define what it was that we were needing to put into our curriculum and what those things meant. So the first thing that we looked at was defining our priority standards. So in those big mass of standards, which ones are most important to our students? And then as if I'm a teacher and I sit with those standards, how do I approach those standards? And in what order do I teach them? Because there is a progression to them. And then third, defining the conceptual understandings and aligning our resources to those standards and then our assessments. Because without that, then we can't ensure that we're really looking at our students at the correct level of mastery to know that if we're hitting our teaching targets. So the process, after we did that, we sat down and we created essential questions for each unit, and then we defined those conceptual understandings. So as it says up there, our conceptual questions point toward important transferable ideas that are worth understanding over time. So these are the big ideas of why do I need to know this? You know, kids always ask, why am I learning this? That's your essential question. It defines that, and it helps our teachers and students know why these things are important. Our conceptual understandings, if you think about that, those are the pieces of knowledge, the things our kids have to know to be able to do whatever it is that we need for them to do. And so we really worked to define those things and put that into words as we created our curriculum documents. So we'll look at a curriculum document here in a bit, but when we open them up, you'll see that the priority standards are defined for the teachers. So it outlines the standards that are most important by unit. And then under that, we have something called auxiliary standards that, we sort of gave that a name, but our auxiliary standards are standards that are taught in conjunction with priorities, sorry. So they hold those up, and it's kind of what our teachers do to teach those things. And then ongoing standards, those are some of our more foundational standards that we're always working on. You know, we're always working on questioning our reading. We're always working on checking our comprehension, those kinds of things. So that just reiterates that our priority standards are important because they create the focus for the unit of study. So when we get into each unit, each unit considers and outlines the purpose of the standard. And remember, I talked about the order. So we put them in order, and then we grouped them with our priority and our auxiliary to help teachers understand, when I'm teaching a skill, these standards are taught with it in conjunction to kind of hold it up. So if I'm going to teach, say, addition and subtraction at maybe second grade, one of the important standards through that, though, is probably going to be problem solving. Then we put our essential questions, our big ideas and our conceptual understandings into each plan. So in the end, what we hope is that our teachers are creating learning experiences that provide students the opportunity to apply their skills and concepts and that those are aligned with the priority and auxiliary standards of each unit. Now, with something really important as we began the work and just looking at what was really happening on our campuses last year, was what we were teaching? Were those things aligned to actually what we were putting in front of kids to do? And in some instances, we found that perhaps we weren't providing our students maybe with enough practice at the correct level and that level of mastery that they're expected to achieve by the end of a grade level. So we, you know, we need to provide them more practice that's aligned with what they're being asked to do for that grade level. So what we did, we created new curriculum documents, and we now have a new curriculum website. So if you go to the website and click on that little link, it opens up to this Google site. And so if we could scroll down to the bottom, so on there, the idea here is that it would be kind of a one-stop place for teachers to go, principals as well, to be able to access resources as well as their plans. So there, by calendars, and we have all of our calendars, instructional calendars for the year, local assessments, state assessments, and such. And then on the right, we have a list of resources for planning. Now, these are resources that are out there for, some of them are public resources, but then some of them are things that we use within Waco ISD. So those are just quick links to be able to access those. And then at the bottom, a place for announcements. And then if we could click on one of the grade levels above, or, yeah, yeah, elementary, that's great. Let's go to third grade. So when you open up by grade and every, it doesn't matter if it's English IV all the way down to Kinder, when you open it up, they all have this same setup. So at the top, and we don't have to open every one of these, at the top, you have the frameworks for each subject area here. So kind of what that shows is how our classrooms should look in that area. And then after that, let's go ahead and we have our yearly glances and some other resources. If we could open up a unit plan, I'll go ahead and show them what, over to the right? Yeah. Can you click on unit? Yes, there you go. Okay. So it's a little bit not showing because of the screen size, but at the top, we have just a quick units at a glance. So those are all the units for this particular grade level in ELAR. Over, you also see the TCAs or our top curriculum assessments. So we created assessments that are aligned to each unit as well. So those are our dates for our unit assessments. And as you scroll down, you'll see unit overviews. And then we get into defining the standards, well, essential questions, sorry, and the big ideas that are kind of hidden right there from our pictures. And then we have our priority standards, auxiliary standards, and so forth. But as we get on down, you'll start seeing the order that, I'm just a little bit more there. So instructional unit sequence. And so you'll see the standards that are ordered. You'll see the conceptual understandings, and what's hidden there are the specificities. So then that's defined around exactly what our students have to do. So conceptual understanding is what they have to know and then what they have to do. And there's a part that's not showing on the screen then, and that out to the right are our resources. And so for each...
Can you scroll over so we can see that? Yeah. The specificity is the big, one of the biggest pieces of the work.
There we go. And so then you'll see the specificity and then the resources that we have. So our folks worked countless hours. I can't, we lived in the boardroom, the summer mainly. And I know that most of us were not back in person yet, but if you could have seen the boardroom, it was pretty much wallpapered with standards at that time. But that piece on the right there with the resources was so important because it, they went so far as to align those resources with the specificity for just that unit and that lesson. So our standards spiral back in, and so sometimes we can go choose a resource that maybe a textbook says is aligned with the standard, but it's not really aligned to what our kids have to know because those are kind of, textbooks are kind of general. We went and we really aligned it with the specificity. And so there's more down below, but that's kind of it in a nutshell. We have writing would be underneath since we're looking at ELAR. That continues on. You'll have writing. You'll have language word study, places for guided reading. But what, we talked about that common language. So we won't spend time doing it tonight, but the website's out there. So if you were to go click on Algebra I, it would look just like this. And if I ask a teacher what a conceptual understanding is at the high school down to kindergarten, they're going to say the same thing. So that's what we were really working hard to achieve. I'm not, you know, not saying we're there yet, but this is the first step in that direction.
So this would be your scope?
Yes.
And then you have a sequence, which is when you teach it?
Correct. And the, some of the documents in terms of the yearly glances and our tests and such were also located on the website. We just didn't open every single one of those links for you guys for the sake of time tonight. Okay, you could...
I just had, I'll just add that where, you know, the goal is for equity, right? So that we're teaching the same scope across the district at the same time, which helps when you have mobility. So when kids are moving in and out, they're not losing content from one school to another.
Yes, and I will say, I mean, it, so this year, or this summer, rather, we focused on K through eight, reading and math, Algebra I, K through eight, science, and then biology, U.S. history, eighth-grade social studies. And so typically, you would invite teachers into that conversation, and they would come in. It's a huge learning experience when teachers are able to participate in that. But because of our circumstances, we weren't able to do that. So with just our coordinators and instructional specialists, that was about as much of a workload as they could handle this summer and get it done and ready for when our students and our teachers came back. So that was followed up with lesson planning and looking at helping our teachers plan. And so Dr. White led numerous sessions of lesson plan training this summer. However, that training was not just isolated to the folks who received new curriculum. That was across the board. All subject areas went through that same training, along with their administrator on each campus. And so that really focused on unpacking the standards and so really taking those standards apart and helping our teachers break those down and understand them. And then from there, we worked on, I can go ahead and go to the next slide. From there, we worked on helping them identify the knowledge and skills, and then from there, taking that to daily lesson objectives and really focusing on the backwards design process. So if we connected that to the words on the curriculum, our knowledge and skills would be our conceptual understandings and our specificities. And then over then to the daily lesson objectives, that would be the resources. And so took them through that process and aligned that very tightly. So just, this is a slide, when I talk to you about tier-one instruction and talking about we're really focusing on that classroom instruction right now, this is really where we're focused, on really developing strong objectives that are rigorous, they're manageable, meaning that the objective that that teacher creates for that day is exactly what they're doing for that day and not a broad objective that maybe is going to unfold over days, that it's distinct, specific to that lesson and what's happening, measurable and data-driven. And so those are the things that we're focusing on as we develop our lessons within our classrooms. I'll give you a brief look at the lesson plan template that they are using. And so this is also something common across the district. So I won't spend a ton of time here, but you'll see there's the objective up top. Something they already had in place was the I do, we do, you do. And so we kept that, but just aligned it kind of with the language we're using. At the bottom, you'll see formative assessment or evaluation, and then exemplars and success criteria. So as teachers are developing their lessons, they're thinking about those activities they're putting in front of students and creating an exemplar themselves before they put it in front of kids to think through, what do I want my kids to know at the end of this? And what does success look like? So that as we're measuring our student learning, we have a clear understanding of what it is we want our kids to do. And then there's a place for our interventions and extensions if it's a class that is providing So our professional development plan, just reiterating kind of what was at the beginning, K through 12, all content areas focused on lesson planning, looking at alignment, objectives, formative assessments. We know, as I said, we're working on literacy also at the elementary level and the middle school and high school focusing on tier-one instruction. And then as we moved, I was just going to show you a glance so you could kind of get a look into what our teachers have been busy doing this summer. So our district professional development calendar is what you're looking at. This started in May, and if we just want to scroll through September. So these are all of the trainings that have been available for our teachers from this summer until now. And this would include some of those trainings that Mr. Allen talked about last time around our instructional technology, where we offered those opportunities for our teachers to receive that training with the stipend, so to help prepare them for the year, our reading academies. But all together, just curriculum-focused. So if we, there have been other offerings as well, such as Safe and Civil Schools and different things like that. But if we just focused on curriculum, there were 122 offerings of different professional developments beginning this summer up until last Friday. So literacy, this is, everything has gone virtual. So all of our training, we don't have to click on those others, but everything has gone virtual. So the Fanta-Sipanell, that was virtual. Of course, Mr. Allen, the training he talked about last time, virtual. But this just shows a glimpse of how many trainings and folks have been trained around curriculum in different areas. So 122 sessions, lesson planning, there were 995 teachers who went through that. Phonics, 344, because that's just elementary. Effective literacy, 346. Our reading academies, we had 196. And that, our reading academies this summer were only directed to kindergarten and third grade teachers. And then the instructional technology training that Mr. Allen spoke of last time, 927 teachers. So they've been busy, and we're really proud of them and everything, well, their commitment, you know, just to the process because in the midst of everything else that's going on, that's pretty impressive, and it just speaks a lot about their dedication. So these are just a couple of pictures, I think on the click. So this is an example of, if, much like your board meeting, when we get on a virtual training, all of our folks show up and they're there. And this was one of our literacy trainings, just a picture of some of our teachers logged This was actually a training that was on a campus, and so they were talking about beginning of the year expectations and different things around some of the things connected to the other trainings that had happened in the summer. different things around some of the things connected to the other trainings that had happened in the summer. One more click, I think. And this would just be, this is a screenshot from one of the literacy trainings. And so some of the information that they were sharing. And for the sake of time, I didn't open those two other links on the, the one slide. But if we had the, our vendors who were, were going through for our training, they, there's a whole online notebook and resources that our teachers have access to who are going through that training. So very helpful. So I think that might be it. Oh, this was, this is actually, Dr. Ken Cannon, actually, I think, took this picture. This was after phonics training. She had gone to tour some campuses. And so this is some pair of professionals getting the phonics materials ready after the phonics training. Pretty quickly after the phonics training. And they also did show them though, in that training, how to use different resources to make that virtual for our students who are virtual as well. So any questions? All right. Well, thank you. Oh.
Step in. Ms. Cornblue, with all of the really high level of work that's gone into the curriculum process, the structure and the training, the development that's gone on throughout, and numbers speak for themselves. But as we move into the year, what resources do you find most effective to provide feedback? How, how the structure, how the development is working to benefit the ultimate classroom experience for students? Is it six-week assessments? Is there some other tools that you're planning on utilizing to get feedback during the course of the year?
So actually a couple of things. So in the lesson planning that we were looking at, that those formative assessments, now those are teacher-created. Certainly that list of resources that I showed you in the curriculum, that, those aren't exhaustive. But when I mentioned action coaching and when we're working on going into classrooms and providing feedback around what we're seeing, a lot of, some of that in between assessments is collected that way. And so what are we seeing? How can we coach our teachers to either stretch themselves? Because it doesn't, when we're coaching a teacher, it doesn't always mean that they need to improve in terms of because something's not going well. It could be that everything's going great, so let's take you to the next level. So that's kind of in the middle. That ties tightly to, in the superintendent's report, TIA came up with the teacher incentive allotment. So one of the things that we're working on right now with, with the human resources department is reworking the walkthrough form to tie that to the coaching work that we're doing. So that our leaders are very calibrated as they're going across. That was one thing that came up around TIA. As we began that work was really looking at teachers and, and having them feel that that just evaluation in general was comparable across campuses. And so we're working on that right now, so that'll be another place for feedback. And then we do have the unit assessments. And so then that's where those data-driven instruction conversations that was mentioned as a part of our training, we kicked that off last year. Certainly not there yet, there's more that needs to be done around that. But they come together kind of in a professional learning community atmosphere. And they talk about, okay, how did our students do? But not just how did they do overall on a standard, but specifically what did they get and what did they not get? Down to that conceptual level. So if we link back to the curriculum and we look at the conceptual understandings, what piece of that did they not get? You know, not just this overall priority standard, but what piece of understanding specifically kept them from progressing with the standard? And then on the lesson plan, if you notice, there was a piece down there that was titled Reteach. And then at that point, that's when we go back and we directly target that Reteach plan to bring that back in. And that, you know, it depends on what percentage of our class didn't get that standard. So is that a, we really have to stop and do a whole day? Or is it more maybe something we're going to work in through maybe a warm-up or something along those lines? So a couple of different ways we're measuring it along the way.
Through the PLC, is that enabling a lot of the classroom teachers to exchange information on best practices, so to speak, or what you, you know, what techniques they're finding most useful?
It is, because in there, you may have a teacher who knocked it out of the park in that area. And they can, they can share. But another thing we're focused on, not, it, it's not in this presentation, but just adding virtual learning is a whole, that's a whole nother area. And so, and we don't have this off the ground yet. I mean, you know, some things are happening as we go. But we've talked and what we would like to do is develop some kind of grade-level PLCs across the district. So if I'm a first grade teacher, I can get online virtually with other first grade teachers and talk with them about what's working in my room as we figure out this whole virtual thing. You know, I talked to a teacher today at Crestview who, I mean, she, she was, she's doing awesome. And she has all kinds of ideas. And I asked her, I was like, you know, how would you feel? Would you want to do this? And she was like, yeah, that would be great. And you know, she just started, we could do this and we could do this. And I think that we have a lot of teachers out there for that part of teaching is concerned, who really have a lot to offer. So the normal sharing in, in a PLC meeting, you know, is, is that's optimal, I mean, that's what we want. But now there's this other layer. And those folks who have particular pieces of knowledge, they might not be on your campus, you know? And so as we learn people throughout the district who are doing really great things where this is concerned and are figuring things out, we want to try to connect them so that they can share as well. And I do think, I do, I mean, I think there's another layer of even helping our principals then understand how to evaluate a teacher who's online and only virtual. That's, that's another piece.
I would say this, that was a full summer on any summer. But especially during this time, it was a, a commitment to stay on course. And I was really proud of the curriculum and instruction team for the heavy lift to get the curriculum written and then to keep the professional development up, because that's the main thing, is taking care of our kids. So learn, keeping our adults' learning is really important.
And we will tackle, I mean, we'll, we'll move into the other areas of curriculum. I mean, you know, other subject areas and such as we go forward. Tweak what we've done this summer and then keep adding on. And hopefully we'll be to a place next summer to where we can have teachers involved and help them be a part, a part of the process.
And that was kind of what I was going to ask is, I mean, do you feel like it was a little bit hampered by the fact that she couldn't get the teachers?
Yeah, definitely. Now, what we will do along the way is ask for their feedback, you know, so that you, if you wait until the end, if something was wrong with unit one, it's important to them during unit one, but by the time they get to unit nine, you know, that they've forgotten kind of what happened there. So we'll be asking for their feedback along the way so that we can either fix things as we go or, you know, keep those so then at the end of the process, then we can work on that. And then perhaps they can even come in on the end of that process and be a part of it even then. Yeah, but it, obviously we're disappointed because we can't have folks together in general. But around curriculum writing, that, that really was kind of a, a blow. Because it, it's not just the, the manpower and the conversation. Teachers learn so much. I mean, I, as a, I think the first time I wrote curriculum, I might have been, I don't know, third-year teacher or something. It was one of the most powerful things I did. And so you just really learn your standards and have good conversations. And so, yeah.
Yeah, and that was one of the most important pieces to me as well, having written curriculum with teachers. So it'll be really important that we bring teachers in to refine those documents. And we'll make a lot, there'll be a lot of revisions.
Oh, yeah.
The first couple of years, and they'll still have revisions every year because they'll think, they'll see things that need to be refined. And you'll see the curriculum get better and better over the years as we continue to build it. And it's really powerful though. It's that job embedded learning, right? You're working through it and talking about it and you really do learn by doing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Lots of work. Ton of work. Okay, Coach Love, are you still behind the? Look at that. Middle school athletics, all yours.
What I need to do? First of all, good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Dr. Ken Cannon, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you guys on the state of our middle school athletic program at this particular time. When I first took this position, when you go into a position, you always assess, make your assessments and see what's needed and what you need to work on. And there's no doubt that middle school is, is our top priority. No doubt in my mind, just based on what I've been able to find. And you can also see the results and some of the things that's happening because it actually trickles up to the high school level. So we have a lot of work to do, but we will get it done. I'm all about completing projects, those of you who know me know that that's what I'm all about, get the job done. Okay, so the first slide, you see our, our beautiful middle schools. Okay? And we'll talk about programs first. If I forget the master's button, you get someone, please remind me. So what we've done so far, we are now members of the Central Texas Middle School League. For over 20 years, we have been playing each other. Our middle schools have been playing each other their entire school year. But now we're in a district now with Midway, Belton, Temple, Carpers Cole and Gaseville. Over 20 years, we've been playing each other. And I can tell you this, when, I can't tell you the number of emails and text messages that I receive from people in the community just thanking us for allowing our kids to play other teams outside of Waco ISD. So they're very much, the coaches are excited, the principals are excited, the kids are excited and the entire community are, are excited as well. We also added golf, tennis and cross country. Matter of fact, we have a, a middle school cross-country meet coming up pretty soon. Our new uniforms for, we, we purchased new practice uniforms. And we also purchased new competition uniforms as well. If I think I have that somewhere, if I can go through, there we are, right there. That's another big hit. Again, phone calls, emails, text messages. That is an example of our football jerseys as well as our volleyball jerseys as well. So we have, of course, we have them for every sport, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys could see, get a couple of examples. So we actually have the school's name on it, on the front, and then we have the mascot on the back. And again, my phone blew up when we posted that as well as far as us spending money and making our kids go out and, and represent Waco, Waco ISD and making them proud the way they look. Okay. Other things that we're doing, first of all, we had a summer camp planned. But we were going to have like an academic enrichment part and also just a basic skill. And we're going to do it at the stadium, but of course the pandemic ruined that for us. But we did get $5,000 from the NFL Foundation because we, we applied and got their scholarship. So that money's there waiting on us to do it this coming summer. We're going to get all the middle school kids to come to the, to the stadium. We're going to teach them fundamentals, we're going to buy them books, let them choose books that they want. And we're just going to make it a, a couple of big days. We increased our equipment budget. We also, sixth grade pre-athletic programs, that's, that's huge. I was able to reach out to other districts and, and get their opinion about sixth grade pre-athletics. And we are, we are definitely behind there. And what we did this summer, I asked all of the high school coaches to meet me at the stadium. For example, they, the volleyball coaches from Waco High and University, their head coaches. We met and I asked them to put together six to eight weeks of curriculum for just fundamental skills. And we met with Pam, who basically does Fisher, who does our elementary. And we put together a curriculum for our pre-athletic, for our sixth graders. Want to separate it, girls and boys, where we can just teach fundamental skills. And then those kids can continue and go on to the seventh grade year, go on to the eighth grade years for, and go further as far as getting them prepared for, for high school. And get them kids, more kids involved. We just have so many kids that's not, not involved, not engaged and just give them something to do and to help them develop. But of course, the, the pandemic, we have a few problems with that as well as far as the principals being able to schedule that the way we had planned. So we're going to put that on hold for now. Even though we do have a couple of schools, Cesar Chavez and I think Karma, last time I talked to that principal, they are going to still be able to do a little of it this year, but that's something we must do for the next school year. I mean, it's, it's critical to get those young kids, those sixth graders started, get them started as soon as possible, just basic fundamental skills, okay? And let's see. Facilities next. I'm preparing to hold this button down and flip through my pages at the same time. It's, it's not a, it's not an easy task. Okay, so I know you guys do a lot of going out to look at our facilities. That is an issue, that is, and I know everyone's aware of that. And I know that, and I, I hope Dr. Ken Cannon don't mind me sharing this with you guys, but I did mention to her a long time ago when I first met her about some of our facilities. And she, she reminded me that there are no old facilities in Belton. And I appreciate that, I appreciate that. So I'm looking forward to, to, to that changing, that change here in Waco. But anyway, so Carver Middle School, we did address their gym floor. We replaced the flooring there, covered it. And then our, our scoreboards, we were able to purchase wireless scoreboards for all of our competition gyms at the middle school. There was only one scoreboard in the competition gym. So if you're playing basketball and the scoreboard is here and you're going that way and it's five seconds ago, you don't know what to do. You just go for it. But now, but now I'm very, very happy to say that we have wireless scoreboards on both ends of our, of our gyms. And that's another thing that the principals were really excited about and they've really called and expressed their appreciation of that as well. And next is staff. One of the things that, that I noticed too in my, in my assessment was that evaluation of coaches. The tool that we were using, and I should have made a copy of that to show it to you, but it probably would take away from my 10 minutes that I have. But they, the evaluation tool is not very good. But we have changed it. Even just going to a practice, observing coaches, our goal is to, to help coaches, to help them improve, to coach them up. And one of, that's one of the things that we must improve on and we will improve on. We will have a, I will meet with my staff on Monday and we'll, we'll set our schedule for the week and we're going to go out to practices. You know, no different than doing walkthroughs and as a principal. And that's the only way you can get input and get, and, and communicate with your, with your, with your coaches and let them know what they need to improve on. And then, and also you can send them over to Baylor. There's no excuse for us not to utilize Baylor as far as athletics are concerned. They win in everything. And it makes no sense for us not to have a really good relationship with them, but we're working on that right now. But we did change our tool. I'm so proud and happy that Dr. Ken Cannon approved me, gave me an opportunity and approved the position for me as middle school coordinator. That position is huge for what we need to do is for us turning around our middle school athletics. And we were able to hire Dustin Sikora, I know you guys know Dustin. He is a former coach. He was a, I guess, an instructional coach is what we call him here in Waco for the district in science. And he, I guess, he knew of my goals as, as one day becoming athletic director. And he had mentioned to me a while back that if I ever was put in this position, that he would love to get back at athletics. And I thought about it right away as soon as I got the job, because I had worked with him a lot for his helping us as a principal at, with our, with our science department, he's, he's outstanding. So very fortunate to have him. He is on those campuses every day right now, every single day. And he's building those relationships and finding out what our middle school coaches and, and staff need. And it's, and it's, and it's going, it's not going to do anything but get better from this point. Professional development, in the past, our middle school coaches have been. Professional development, in the past, our middle school coaches have been, it's been optional to them, if, as far as going for any type of professional development, but that's mandatory now, they must attend. And I'm going to ask them to choose their primary sport that they really like the most, or they want, that they need the most assistance in, and that's the one that we will send them to. And I'm looking at being able to do more than one in the, in the, in the future. So, now on here is our monthly scheduled meetings with middle school coaches, that's something that I do monthly. And also, I found out yesterday that we finally have a new complex equipment manager, it's Ed Trocom. You guys might remember Coach Trocom, he was a head baseball coach at Waco High, then he moved to, to Midway as a softball coach. So, he, he agreed to come on and help us. He's an outstanding individual, and I coached with him for quite a few years, and I know he'll be a, a huge plus for, for athletic department. The future, all right. There are a lot of things over here that I hadn't talked to Dr. Ken Cannon about, so I'm not going, I'm not going to put her on the spot. I love, I love this job. Okay, again, our sixth-grade pre-athletic program. We have got, and, and again, and I'm talking to surrounding districts, and not just, you know, schools that we're playing in Dallas. I'm talking about schools around here that has these programs already, has this sixth-grade pre-athletic program, but, and, and we don't have it, but we are going to get it. So, that's something that's going to happen, it's going to happen very soon. At, at most of our varsity games, like football games, volleyball games, we will have a middle school night, where we acknowledge the principals. I want the principals to be able to, I'm going to let them tell us what they want to talk about. One thing this year, especially for football games, we're only having just one band, you know, playing, so that's going to give us some additional time, and I want to be able to acknowledge our middle schools, you know, again, I'm going to talk to the principals and see what they want to talk about. And I might, they might want to, whatever they want to talk about, I'm going to give them time during halftime to do that, okay? So, we'll be acknowledging our middle schools, our auxiliary gyms. Tennyson Middle School, there's not enough seating. And then, we're playing, you know, again, teams from around here that's going to bring in a pretty good little crowd, and we're trying to maintain that 50%. So, we are working on bringing in new bleachers for that. Matter of fact, I talked to Dustin about that today. We're, we're getting pretty close to getting that, getting that accomplished. As well as Waco High School, their auxiliary, auxiliary gyms also have that same issue. So, we're working on that as well, because we want to make sure that we abide by the UIL guidelines, as far as that 50% is concerned. Paul Tyson Stadium, one thing about O'Connor, Robertson, those guys are very professional. We talk every week, Zoom, and the thing that's more impressive about them is that they always ask me, or they want to talk to one of the coaches, about things that they're doing, and I'm, you know, that's, that's unusual. That normally is, is decided, and then, you know, you get what you get. But those guys are really interested in finding out exactly what we need and what the coaches need, because the coaches are the ones that's in the trenches, and they, and they know, so, I'm, I've really been impressed with those guys. So, so, right now, that's moving along. And Muni Stadium, the old dressing room, we're looking at converting that into a weight room for Caesar Chavez. They do not have a weight room at this time. You go over there, and they're working out, later on in the afternoon, you'll see them banging weights on the gym floor, so that's, that's unacceptable. So, we're working on converting that, that the old Muni dressing room area there is plenty big enough, we go over there several times, and we kind of map things out, and I know that's one of the, the projects we will be working on pretty soon. And then, there are some tracks that need to be resurfaced, and, and overall, at the end of the, right before the pandemic, when we, when we, when we shut down the school, we had 962 middle school athletes, and that's seven and eight graders. For the number of kids that we have overall, as far as our four middle schools are concerned, we should be around 1,500. So, we are, we're behind. I'm just, I'm just, just being straight with you, telling them like it is, we are behind. And that's from checking with other school district, as far as the number of middle schools that they have, the number of kids that they have, overall. So, we have a lot of work to do, have a lot of work to do, but again, I want to appreciate Dr. Ken Cannon for, for her support. I've gone to her, and we've talked, and I've given her a summary of what's going on, and I think some of the things she was, she was kind of surprised as far as us, how far behind we are, but we are. But I love taking on challenges, that's what, that's what I do, that's what I love doing. And so, I'm looking forward to turning this thing around. Because there was a time, and I know you guys have been here for a while, that our middle schools, there were teams that are around here that wouldn't play our middle schools, just like teams wouldn't play our high schools, because we had a lot of athletes, and we, and we were, we were very good. But we'll, we'll bring it back. That's all I have at this time, any, any questions?
Mr. Sykes?
Yeah, thank you for your present, presentation, Coach Love. I want to say I'm impressed with your assessment of the programs you've got, and the facilities, and the future glimpse that you presented to us. I must say, I'm most impressed, since there's no cost associated with this, it plans on doing it for no cost, or no additional cost. That's very, very impressive.
Not yet, but we're working on that part of it.
That's the part I didn't want to mention, it'd give me in trouble.
Thank you for your presentation.
Hey, Coach Love?
Athletic Director Love, thank you.
I appreciate your.
This is impressive, and I do think you're getting on a lot of.
I think both of y'all are talking at the same time.
I can see your vision. Your vision is to get Waco Independent School District back in the top, in the top, in the top 10. We, we kind of falling behind, but, but, but I can see you, and, and that's what a lot of school districts do, they starve them young and raise them up, and we raise our own, and we need to do that in every aspect of Waco Independent School District. We raise our own, train them, get them ready, and make them successful. And that's from sports, I mean, athletics, and administration, teachers, and everybody. And you are being a great example of what we need to do to raise our own and raise the district up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Dupuy.
I think I just agree with about 95% of Norman said, so pick the parts of that you like, and. Thank you, I think that's it. Reaching down in the middle, middle schools, fantastic, I think we moved up for a long time, but.
Good luck, appreciate it, thank you very much.
I, I'd like to thank you too, because my daughter played middle school sports here, and she loved it, but they're definitely, there's definitely room for improvement, and it's great that we're going to be playing other schools. She's going to be super jealous when I show her the uniforms. And anyway, I just really appreciate all the work you guys are doing, it's awesome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Before you leave, Coach Love, I feel like I lived through the dark days of middle school athletics, and I just have to say, this is a bit emotional for me to, to look at, number one, what, that you're tackling it. Number two, that you recognize that what we have had is just not acceptable. And because we haven't done any work at our middle school, our high schools suffer, our programs suffer, we're not as competitive as we should be. You're right, we used to win here. And we have neglected these kids at middle school in every way, from what you can see in uniforms, to the facilities in which they play, to the support we give to our coaches, so they can provide good instruction, and you've hit it all. You've hit it all in this presentation, and I'm quite impressed, I'm hopeful. I, I had, I was sitting here thinking, when did I give up? Fighting for middle school athletics, because I know as a parent, I fought, but, you know, it just seemed like, for whatever reason, just could not get this competition, for one thing. Without quality competition, our kids are at a disadvantage when they get to high school. So, I, I just commend the scope of the work and how you really looked at it from every angle, and I can hear your, your passion for, for making it better. And I just, please. Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm really excited for what the future holds, and I, you know, I thought maybe your next slide was going to be, the future is winning. Winning and, and kids really experiencing all that athletics has to offer, and, and, you know, it's helped you be a well-rounded person.
Exactly.
So, anyway, thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Ken Cannon, for the support you've been giving athletics, and your recognition that what we have been doing is just not acceptable. So.
Coach Love has done all the work, but he knows I like to win, too.
Yeah.
He's done a, he's done a beautiful job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
He is to be commended, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, announcements, Mr. De Beere.
Again, Madam President, there are three opportunities for folks in our community, including our employees and families, to receive free testing for COVID-19 between now and our next board meeting, and wanted to take a moment to highlight those. The first is being hosted by Tolliver Chapel Missionary Baptist Church on September 16th and 17th. That will be drive-through testing, and registration is required. You'll be able to find the link to register on our website tomorrow, if you go to the COVID-19 section at wacoisd.org/covid19. The second testing opportunity is September 24th through the 26th at the Waco Multipurpose Center, and that's a walk-up site, no registration is required for testing at that site. And the third opportunity will be October 2nd at Waco Fire Station 5, and that, again, is going to be a drive-through site that requires preregistration. For all of the sites, testing is open to anyone who believes that they might have COVID-19, or believes that they might have been exposed to someone with COVID-19. You don't have to have symptoms to be tested, and these are tests that are being conducted, utilize the cheek swab, so not as invasive as some of the other tests that you may have seen. Finally, I wanted to end tonight on a celebration. We learned today that for the second year in a row, Waco ISD is a Texas Arts Education Association District of Distinction Award winner. We're really excited about this. Out of the more than 1,000 school districts in the state of Texas, there were just 42 districts this year that received this honor. It's, it takes a 12-point rubric that's really quite rigorous. It looks at the district's visual art program through membership and TAEA, through exhibitions, through public service, and determines whether or not there really is a remarkable support for the visual arts in the district. And so, we're excited to have been in the inaugural class last year, we're excited to receive the recognition again this year, and we're looking forward to celebrating this in a more formal way during recognitions at an upcoming board meeting. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Good night, thank you.